Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie.
Here.
Councilmember Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Malamwee.
Here.
Councilmember Emig.
Present.
Councilmember Painter.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Councilmember Crable.
Here.
Councilmember Bray.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and go through -- we have appointments and recognitions that were--
We just need a -- sorry.
Oh, that's right.
Motion for Jen.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Thanks.
And Jen is still there. Do we have a motion to permit Alderman Carrillo to participate virtually?
Some of--
Moved by Alderman Mathie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Emig. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie.
Yes.
Councilmember Boland.
Yes.
Councilmember Malamwee.
Here.
Councilmember -- Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Black.
Yes.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Okay. Jen, you with us?
I am.
You're ready to hit the ground running?
Yes.
All right. Okay.
Mayor, Mayor.
For work purposes.
Yes, just to announce for work purposes. Correct. Sorry. I think I did that during -- trusted the township, but I forgot to do that here. Thank you so much. Okay. She's away for work purposes, so that is consistent with our ordinance. Next, we have appointments, recognitions of people who have been approved, appointed by the mayor, approved by the council. And if you are here, if you would please stand, and we could hold the applause until everyone's recognized. Appointment of Brittany Burton to the Citizens Unification Committee. Brittany, are you here? Don't see Brittany. Appointment of Jeffrey Pitzer to the Cultural Commission. Jeffrey. Appointment of Betty Middleton to the Bloomington Housing Authority. Betty. Colton Sylvester to the John M. Scott Healthcare Commission. And appointment of Ed Breitweiser to the Transportation Committee. Ed? Okay. Well, can we just give them a round of applause and abstention? Thank you. Next, we move to public comment. And again, I would just remind everybody that if you want to get answers to questions or perhaps problems solved, we meet on Fridays from 4:30 to 5:30 for a mayor's open house, kind of like a town hall meeting every other week, right over there by the Fishbowl, prior to a regular council meeting. So if you want answers, you want to talk, or even throw ideas out to your fellow citizens, that's the place to do it. Here, we do not -- that's our policy, is to not respond. And so you have up -- individuals have up to three minutes. I will read these in groups of three. And actually, at this point, we don't have -- we're not going to go over time. So Kim Jackson, Peter Pontius, and Scott Steinle. So if we could start with Kim. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Kim Jackson. I am part-owner of Math VR here in town. And let me open my notes here. Sorry. So I'd like to respectfully request that you approve the gaming addition to some new licenses coming forward. I was born and raised here. I've been in business in town with a high-integrity reputation for over 25 years. And we applied for a gaming license coming on close to a year ago. I understand the desire to put some kind of limit or basic requirements on video gaming, you know, coming into town. But my business is a classic example of why hard and fast rules for new licenses can be detrimental to local business growth. Instead, set up some exceptions that fit within what the city is trying to accomplish, rather than, you know, these very harsh, across-the-board moratorium-type things that could drive businesses away. We are offering a unique venue for customers who don't want the environment of a gas station or a bar. Had we known, we would have had these kind of delays based on our business being specifically game and entertainment-oriented. We very well would have actually looked into moving into normal. So I just request that you pass this, so we can move forward with our business concept. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Peter Pontius, and then Scott Steinle, and then Nancy Marciniac.
Good evening. My name is Peter Pontius. I am the Director of Loss Prevention Compliance for B&amp;B Amusement of Illinois. I hope my plaid shirt and new boot is in decorum for the meeting this evening. I just wanted to briefly talk about support of Pilot Truck Stop, which is one of our clients, in terms of the large truck stop category that's on the video gaming agenda this evening. The -- by having a large truck stop, and we actually have two in town, TA and Pilot, by not allowing those two establishments to have the maximum 10 games, which the state has allowed, the city will be passing on $25,000 in revenue upfront from their own application fee or license fee for perennals, yet alone the income from the additional five games at each location in terms of revenue that those games would bring in, and then also the revenue from transient people that are passing through as truckers. Fuel tax from the hundreds of gallons of diesels that they pump. The gaming tax that the city receives from the player there. Sales tax in their convenience stores, as well as the food sales tax from their restaurants. These are all transient people passing through that the city of Bloomington will be passing on that revenue and allowing it to go down the road to additional -- or to truck stops that are outside of the city limits. McLean, Lincoln, Maroa, Shinoah, Decatur, Farmer City, Leroy, and the list goes on. All those municipalities are going to have the ability to have 10 games at their large truck stops, which they all do. So why are we allowing those dollars to leave Bloomington? If you allow the truckers to stop here, their money will stay here. If you allow them to go down the road, that's lost revenue. And I don't think that's a bad -- I think that's a bad business decision on the city's behalf to allow that revenue to go to other municipalities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Scott Steinle, Nancy Marciniac, and then Tom Hubbard.
Okay, this past Monday morning, there was another torrential downpour, which we needed. However, as Jim Karsh gets sick and tired of hitting me saying, the inlets could not handle the volume of water. Naturally, the streets flooded. The sidewalk, it was over the sidewalk, up the drive, headed for the house. Fortunately, it didn't come in, Terry. You know, it makes me wonder, when are these sidewalks and streets going to be done? I know you're working on them, but not fast enough. If you'd have done a little each year, we wouldn't be in crisis mode. And you get tired of hearing me say that, and I'm going to keep beating a dead horse until the horse dies. I guess the thing that -- then I realized that it may be difficult for the city to learn to comprehend, to live within their means, but they're no different than anybody else. And if Jim would have kept up a little on these every year, we wouldn't be in crisis mode. I've said everything I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy, and then Tom Hubbard, and Neil Upoff.
Hi, I'm Nancy Marciniac. Some observations. I've worked alongside many immigrants in my life. Some had papers, some did not. In 20-plus years as a waitress, I worked with immigrants from Mexico. They often came without English, starting as dishwashers. When their English improved, they could work the front of the store as busboys. They were capable, hardworking, had good family values. Not all wanted to become U.S. citizens. Some wanted to eventually return to the ties of home. Some did pursue legal status, which opened the possibility to train as a cook. A cook was a more difficult cog in machinery to replace on short notice. Investments couldn't be risked on a person who might suddenly be caught up in a raid and deported. But all these men were important cogs in the wheel. They contributed to the same system that supported a lot of waitresses in their families, including mine. They filled a cliche, hard-to-fill niche, but these men were not stereotypes. Years later, different job paths, I worked with other immigrants. Educated, skilled, able to create their own niche. It was a small business, designed specialized products for industry. Office manager, lovely man, Lebanese. Electrical engineer, tall, shy, from Belarus. One-woman office staff from Puerto Rico. A mechanical engineer, Romanian, impish sense of humor, down-to-earth, family man, played classical violin, invited us all to a free concert given by his chamber group at a local church. There was an affiliated business next door with a sheet metal shop that fabricated our consoles, all Polish. It seems to me that being a good citizen has little to do with paperwork. Rather, it has to do with contributing your individual efforts to the whole, even when circumstances have left your individual potentials unrealized. It also seems to me that it is the obligation of society to recognize individual effort and create opportunities that allow circumstances to change. If not for the first generation, at least for the second. I do not want to see any group of people become a permanent underclass. That bears repeating. I do not want to see any group of people become a permanent underclass. But in a populous planet with ever-shifting peoples, these are complicated issues. They require the cooperation of countries, the collaboration of educational, social, and cultural structures, and they need attention to the machinery in motion that we call an economy. A little grease doesn't hurt once in a while.
Thank you. Tom Hubbard, Neil Upoff, and Regina Nolan.
I'm here because of the video gaming. I do not believe in any way, shape, or form that -- and I say this with all due respect, nobody sitting up there has been elected to tell me or anybody above the age of 21 how they should spend their discretionary entertainment dollar. The gambling cat is out of the bag. There's no going back. You have to let the market dictate how this is going to work. And I see no reason why that should not work when I've been here more than once to say, "Let's put a cap on liquor licenses." And that's never been agreed on, because everybody in not only this city council, but past city councils, have said, "No, the market will dictate the number of liquor licenses we need." The market should dictate this, too. There's absolutely no reason why it shouldn't. And nobody up here will ever convince me that it should. So I'm pleased, when you're voting tonight, I mean, I'm not in favor of a cap at all. Let the market do what it's going to do. I don't really understand what I heard on the radio today and read in the newspaper today about, "We're going to do this, we're going to do that," with some exceptions. What are the exceptions? You know, and I've been here for 42 years with a liquor license. I've already been vetted by the FBI and the state and everybody else. I'm being forced to take over another bar that I sold 20 years ago. I have to take it back now. Am I going to be a new account? Or there's already machines in there, will I be able to take over those machines? Nobody understands what you're trying to do here, and it needs further explanation. And one little last point. Last week, I think it was when you had your town meeting, there was a lady came up and said something to the effect, and I'm not going to have the numbers right, that in the month of July, $100, or $1 million was lost through these machines. Well, $1 million may have been put into the machines, but the state says 93% of that has to be paid back. So those figures need to be explained totally. Thank you.
Thank you. Neil Upoff and Regina Nolan.
I'm here on behalf of my father, Ken Upoff. This is in regards to the Mackinaw River Pumping Basin. Dad would like to buy the land back. The following is a statement from Dad. There is only one purpose for the land and the basin, emergency water supply. There is only one purpose for the sell-back provision, the resale to be made when the emergency no longer existed. I was not in the negotiation sessions. Mr. Fleming and my lawyer was taking care of that. The words "only one purpose" and "emergency" were not included because I felt they were not necessary due to the oral agreement between myself and the city water department. Mary Smart was quoted in the Sunday Telegraph article that he didn't remember the word "emergency" or "one purpose" stated, and makes me wonder if he wasn't in the negotiating sessions and just received updates as I did. That's the end of Dad's statement. So, back in '89, going through that drought, I can see why the city wanted to do this. But when the city raised the level of the dam five feet, that should have negated the emergency need right there because of the higher volume. Now the city has drilled two wells in the St. Peters Aquifer for blending purposes. But there's no limit to when you can pump from those wells, as far as I know. The pumping basin can only be used when the level of the water in both lakes combined are down eight feet and the level of the Mackinaw is at a certain height. The problem there is when the lakes are low, so is the Mackinaw, making pumping difficult. In the last two years, I have been told that the water department was able to pump from the basin for one day, one day in two years. I have been told that the basin can pump 1 million gallons of water a day. The aquifer pumps can pump 1 million gallons of water per day, per well. If those numbers are correct, if the city ran those two wells every day for two years, it would pull 1.4 billion gallons less water out of the lakes. Using 1.4 billion gallons less far outweighs maybe getting 1 million gallons if the recognitions are right. I've also been told that the city is looking at another six wells in the St. Peters Aquifer. That would be 5.8 billion gallons less out of the lakes in those two years. This is the family's farm where my dad was born. The city took half that farm to eminent domain when they built the Lake Evergreen in late '60s. Then in '89, the city split the last 100 acres in two halves when they bought this 11-acre tract. Dad would like to have the farm put back in one piece. My sons and I agree with him. The need for the pumping basin is long past now that the level of the lake is higher and you have wells in the St. Peters Aquifer. My grandfather bought the land in 1918. It has been in the family for over 100 years. My sons and my desires to have that in the family another 100 years. The provision to buy the land back is included in the deed because it was meant for the family to be able to buy the land back once the emergency need was over. That time has come. We are asking you to contact the water department and ask them to start negotiations for the resale of the basin land back to the Upoff family as is stated in the provision.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for getting my name right. I just have a few things, they go back a few months, I've been too ill to get here to address, but they've been bothering me about the town. A couple of things about Alderman Carrillo. I understand that she didn't come here legally. She is now a legal citizen. Good for her. She really needs to start acting like she's appreciative of being in a republic and not treating people, citizens in this town, the way that she has treated myself. I wish she was here tonight, physically. Let's see. There's been several times that I've noticed, watching the videos of the city council meeting, where Jen would be standing there not reciting, you know, "No hand on the heart," the only thing she says, "Injustice for all." She doesn't come out and say the pledge completely. It just seems to me that she's very disrespectful and does not appreciate where she's at. Let's see. Moving on to that, let's see. I watched a complete video of Terry that Angela had taken about the comments about Clarence Thomas. So there was a complete -- it wasn't out of context, what you had said. And I really think that the media here should have addressed that issue. Let's see, it was very, I don't know, it really, it took me back. I couldn't believe it was said. And I can't believe that BLM and NIAAT haven't addressed it either, or the council hasn't done anything about your comments, because it was pretty bad. Well, let's see, where are we at here? Jen texting while people are speaking. It's been seen many times, it's been talked about in our circle, or, you know, about -- it's just disrespectful. When people are talking, they should be -- at least act like you're listening. Let's see. Oh, Jen, about the gypsy debacle. I am part gypsy. I did message Jen when this all came down. She told the media that nobody contacted her about that. That's a lie. And I told her that I would be addressing it at city council, and she just blew me off.
I'm sorry, your time is up. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I know. You didn't cut anybody else off when they went over. Thank you.
Okay. All right. At this point, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that any member of the city council would like to have removed from the consent agenda?
Seven I.
Seven I, Alderman Crable. Seven F, as in Frank. Got you. Seven F, as in Frank, Alderman Mathie. Okay. Is there a motion therefore to then approve the consent agenda as presented with the exceptions of item seven I, as pulled by Alderman Crable, and seven F, as pulled by Alderman Mathie? So move.
Second.
Okay. Moved by our first-in-chief, Alderman Malamwee. Second by Alderman Crable. If anyone will go ahead and vote on the motion as presented, unless there's discussion. Alderman -- excuse me, Councilmember Crable. Excuse me, Crable. Councilmember Carrillo, how do you vote on this?
Aye.
Okay. The Alderman Emig, did you mean to vote? All right. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no names to announce, Madam Clerk. Okay. We move right along. I'm going to start in the order in which they were pulled. Item seven I, Councilmember Crable.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for the application for Jay Goga, doing business as Illinois Liquor for a liquor license for a convenience store at 2402 East Oakland Avenue, which is in Ward Eight. I'm in favor of the license. I just wanted to potentially address just kind of the criteria that we use and make sure that we understand it. And I just, I looked through everything, and to me, you know, it looks like it, you know, I don't see any concern with the ownership, with the layout of the store. There are several other places where you can buy liquor in that area, not on that side of the street, and it seems to fit in. It's a business area, I mean, a retail area with a lot of other retail stores. It's not really close to residential areas. So the liquor commission unanimously approved it, so based on that, I'm a -- I would vote in favor of it. But let me go to the city code, which I'm looking up here. Thanks to Leslie. And this would be creation of a new license, and it talks about the creation of such licenses. I'm sorry, it's 106A, and then B is the standard. So, "The city council should not create a new liquor license unless it has previously found the creation of such license is necessary for the public convenience of residents and the best interests of the city of Bloomington." I think it meets that standard. I think maybe the concerning ones would say be 5H, the extent to which other businesses are licensed to sell alcoholic beverages at retail in the area under consideration. And then number six, the probable demand for the proposed liquor establishment in the city. So I guess my question, if you may follow up, would be, are these just, in essence, criteria to consider just and not necessarily a, you know, yes or no, hard answer kind of thing? This is just kind of within our discretion, considering those things.
I am pulling that section up as well. Yeah, so I'm pulling that section up as well. This is something, actually, George Boyle in our office handles, the liquor licenses. But it's my understanding that these are the criteria that you look at, and it does say other relevant factors. So I don't consider this to be an exclusive list, and the mayor, as a liquor commissioner, may be able to speak to that as well.
Yeah, these are the things that we would consider. One of the other things, it's not specifically mentioned-- One of the other things that's not specifically mentioned is whether or not we've had objections. And we had no objections at the liquor commission meeting, and I think that's one of the many reasons why. And it's in a commercial district, and as you note, the layout, we would definitely take a look at the layout. There were questions about video gaming as part of their license. That's a pretty typical question to ask. And obviously, economic impact, generally at a macro level, but also immediately if it were residential. Obviously, we've kind of gone through that fairly recently in terms of a residential impact as well. But I don't know. Jeff, something I'm missing?
No, other than, I would just say, this talks about things that you shall consider. There's no disqualifying factor, per se, in here. So if, this is something that the liquor commission, they flush through all of these when they have those hearings. But I'm not aware of any requirement that you've got to detail each single one of them.
I was just going to add, too, that they're not disqualifying factors. I think they're more of being open and giving interested parties things to consider when applying, like these items may be considered. I just, they're not hard set, but things for you to consider, and then also a way to be transparent to the applicant.
Alderman Carrillo, did you have a comment? I thought I heard a D.
No.
That wasn't you? Oh, that was you. I'm sorry. Councilmember Bowlin.
One of my questions was answered, but the IML recommends that elected officials, and I would think that maybe commissioners, would go visit the site. Did anybody do that?
I drive past it every day.
Yeah, I think several of us do. I don't know that, of the three liquor commissioners, I don't know which ones, I would, at least two had visited the site, not at the same time. But that doesn't matter. But anyway, often that's the case. Do we visit every site? No. If it's downtown, I always go. The other liquor commissioners may or may not. That's very, depending on who's on the liquor commission. Anything else?
I move to approve the item seven I.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Bray. If everyone will go ahead and vote. Councilmember Carrillo?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries nine to zero. There are no names to announce, Madam Clerk. We move to the next item, and that was pulled by councilmember Mathie, seven F.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to pull this one just, well, due to the size of the contract, and that I also think that there are probably a lot of people who have no idea what this one's talking about. And I think that we can probably introduce a little bit more clarity into what we're doing with this sizable amount of money, which is, you know, the 10-second summary is we're improving our water delivery system. But I think there's a lot more to that, and I was hoping that Jim could add some clarity on the record, just to make sure that everybody's aware of what's going on in this contract, what we're doing here, and why it's such a large contract. So, Jen, if that's okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is a large item, and so this is important to have the opportunity to talk about. It's going to put everybody to sleep, but it's very important. So whenever you talk about a water distribution system, the importance of clean water is critical. The information to distribute that water is just as critical. If you don't know pressures, water quality at the different points of the water distribution system, you can't provide an equitable system across the distribution system. So SCADA is just an acronym that stands for Supervisory and Data Acquisition System. So that's really all it is. So it's the ability for the, throughout the distribution system, to have data acquisition monitors, to be able to say, what's the chlorine level at this point in the system? What's the pressure at this point in the system? So that the supervisors, the people running the plant, can make sure that they have all of the information, so that they push the right amount of water through the system, they don't push too much, too little. You could do a lot of damage if you have the wrong pressures in the system. You can blow a lot of main and have a lot of water main breaks if you do it wrong. So this is really important. It's 20-plus years old in many of our places, and so it's high time that we start to replace that. As part of that process, the department, two, almost three years ago, started the overall master planning process so that we had a game plan to be able to move forward. And so this is in line with wanting to start some of those pieces that are in line with some of the information that we learned as part of that process.
Thanks, Jim. Water breaks are bad.
Summary, water breaks are bad.
Well, and I wanted to shed a little clarity on this, too, because, you know, I represent older parts of town with a lot of those old water mains and water lines all over the place, and we have on a regular basis breaks where we're digging things up, and we're digging roads up and stuff like that, too. So I know that it's top of mind for all of us that we need to fix the infrastructure under the street before we put new pavement on top of the street, because the worst last thing we want to do is we don't want to dig anything up, we just repaved, right? So we want to make sure that we're on the right path. And just for, again, just for clarity, the way that this is written is, right now, we don't actually know 100% the scope of work. So we're approving an amount without knowing the scope of work yet, because some of that is going to depend on, once you start, you know, I own an old house. Once you open up the walls to fix one thing, you never know what you're going to find inside of those walls. And I made that same analogy to somebody today, that once we start working on this, we don't necessarily know every bit that we're going to uncover along the way. So there needs to be some flexibility in this particular contract in order to have a functional system when we get out the other end of this.
That is correct. There are times when we know exactly the steps that need to be taken to accomplish a goal. In this case, we don't completely, we're being transparent. We don't completely know what will be the first thing that we'll have issues with. We know, we've set some goals for this year, as far as some software and hardware issues. We know there are some complete failures with some of our remote detection. But beyond that, we know that there's just, this is a maintenance contract that's trying to allow up to accomplishing certain goals and for a length of time. There's always the ability for the city on an annual basis, if we're having issues, and we've communicated properly to get out of the contract. But this really gives us that ability to maintain the system we have.
That's awesome, Jim. Thank you. Now, the one thing that, you know, hopefully, we're going to have a technology commission that is put in place soon. And once we get there, I'm going to have some requirements I'm going to want to talk to you about as we're looking at open data and as a future topic, and what kind of analysis we can do with our partners at research universities, which happen to be located fairly close to us, around some of the, you know, where they're looking at engineering programs that they're bringing in. There could be some partnerships there in the future, but that's a couple of years down the road. So that'll just top of mind awareness, that that'll be something we're talking about in the future of how the city functions on an open data platform, too, which things we allow access to and which we don't. But there's still many iterations to happen before that, so.
It's good to highlight, we have contracts already with Illinois State University and other universities for some research-type issues, even up at Lake Bloomington. It gives us that opportunity to highlight. We have some of those in place and always looking for more opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Painter. Any further discussion? If everyone will go ahead and vote, then. Councilmember Carrillo? Motion carries nine to zero. There are no names to announce, Madam Clerk. And we move on to our next items, which are regular agenda. And the first is action on an ordinance approving a real estate contract with the Boys and Girls Club. We have approximately 10 minutes budgeted for the city manager, and approximately 10 minutes of council discussion on this, and I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an exciting item, and I don't say that too often, but this one rises to that level. I stepped into this position July of last year. This had been in the works, this discussion, this public-private partnership had been something that had been talked about for a little while, and council made it very clear that, you know, they want it disaddressed and try to find a way with the Boys and Girls Club. This is part of the community that is in need of, you know, a facility like this, and then also the economic opportunities that might be trailing opportunities. So at the end of the day, what is before council is nearly seven and a half acres are located on, at this park. About 3.4 acres, if approved, will be sold by the city to the Boys and Girls Club for $1. And it will kick off for them a fundraising effort to build a 12- to 15-million-dollar facility in that neighborhood. In exchange, you know, in addition to the facility for that part of the neighborhood, there'll be infrastructure improvements and some improvements to the remaining four acres that's to the west, that butts up to the east side of the Benward property for future opportunities. So while this thing has been discussed for the last year plus, and really, you know, we were getting down to dotting the i's, crossing the t's over the past year, it's taken this amount of time because there were a number of things to consider. You know, as an example, the original site where we were going to put water retention or detention was in the location of the community gardens that were out there. In exploring this and looking at this, we found that if we moved a little bit to the south, that water detention area, that would expand opportunities for the community gardens to, in fact, grow. So we made that change. So there's just a number of things along the way that we were in partnership and discussion with the Boys and Girls Club. And I've got about seven minutes left, and what I would like to do, there's many people that have been involved in this, but in my mind, no one more so than Terry Reed, and also the executive director of the Boys and Girls Club, Tony Morstetter. And if you don't mind, I'd like to call them to the podium, and they can share some additional comments. But this is a big day for us in the community, and I'd like to recognize both of them and give them an opportunity to say a couple of words. Terry, you're not going to get off without, yeah.
Well, thank you, Tim. Thank you, Mayor Renner and the city council. Thank you for being patient with us. I know it's been a long time. We've had some amazing conversations. We wanted to make sure that the partnership that we're building with the city of Bloomington is a great partnership. We're excited about the opportunity. We're excited about continuing this partnership. I do want to say that this is an amazing time for us. The past year, we've had a waiting list from our second week of our after-school program. This year, we started off our program, the week before we started our program, we had a waiting list. We're excited about the opportunity, not only for the Sunnyside Neighborhood Community, but Bloomington and Normal combined. We know that there's more kids in our community that need a safe place to be after school. There's families that need to know that their kids are safe after school, and that's what we're here for. And we appreciate your guys' support in this. We appreciate all the staffs, every staff member that's been involved in this. It's been a true partnership, and we can't thank you guys enough.
All I could add to it is my appreciation to all your cooperation with this, and this is going to be a great project, and I would welcome everybody to take a visit there and look at the looks on these kids' faces. It'll just break your heart. Thank you.
Thanks. Hold on, just, if you could just wait in case we had any questions. Were you done?
I'm done.
Questions of Mr. Morstetter? Yes.
Well, I think this is a great thing, and therefore, I would like to make a motion to approve item 8A as presented.
Moved by councilmember Painter. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Bray. Discussion, councilmember Bowlin?
I'm very much in favor, and I will vote in favor. But I want to explain to the community at large, you are buying this plot for a dollar, but you are investing 3/4 of $1 million for fixing the property, the drainage and all that, okay? You will be having a large, open green space to benefit the entire neighborhood, not just the Boys and Girls Club. You are investing about $12 million in the building. And if all of this falls through, which I hope it does not, it goes back to the city. I think it's a win-win, and anybody that complains, they can take it up with me. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Carrillo, do you have any questions or comments?
No, but thank you for checking.
Okay, thanks. Anybody, anything else? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, then? If everyone will go ahead and vote. Councilmember Carrillo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay. I'm not shocked, I just wanted to ask. Okay. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no names to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you both. Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Mr. Gleason, and thank you, staff, because this has been a very, very long, multi-year project. So thank you. Appreciate that. Now we'll go to item B, and that's consideration of action to approve an ordinance amending Chapter 7 of the city code to implement new video gaming license requirements within the city, and two, an ordinance setting a date for acceptance of video gaming license applications, both as requested by the city, excuse me, by the administration department. And I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Gleason, and then we have a presentation by Mr. Gleason and Mr. Jurgens. That's about five minutes, and at least in theory, a council discussion of 10 minutes, but we shall see.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Not going to use my entire five minutes, I promise. This has been something that had been discussed. Moratorium was in place, it rolled into some considerations at the state level. Fair amount of staff time has been spent on this very important topic. The elected input has been, you know, obviously, very much appreciated, giving us direction. And at the end of it all, and tonight before council is the action item. We think that we've delivered something that all council members can vote in favor of, their strong opinions for. Quite a bit of community input, which was not dismissive of that either. We truly think that we have an ordinance that can be considered by council, potentially approved. Some of the quick items. Increase the video gaming terminals and be capped at 60 establishments. Video gaming revenue for each licensed establishment cannot exceed 50% of the establishment's total gross revenues, similar to liquor license. Establishments will be limited to five video gaming terminals, except for large truck stops. Establishments will have to meet certain requirements, including at least five customer seats per video game terminal, be in operation for at least 12 months, with certain exceptions, prior to getting a video gaming license, not be located within a residential zoning district. The sale of cannabis will be prohibited at establishments. Sports betting will be prohibited at establishments, except for truck stops. Detailed application requirements, auditing and reporting provisions to ensure compliance with non-video gaming revenue requirements, provisions on the transfer of video gaming licenses, location changes, and the cessation of operations, directive to the city manager to explore potential partnerships and/or grant opportunities with local nonprofit organizations that provide addiction services. And lastly, the fee for video gaming licenses will remain the same at 500 per video gaming terminal, and the terminal fee for large truck stops is set at $1,500 per terminal. This is something just, I know council's aware, I know the community's aware, but I wanted to walk through these one more time. At the committee of the whole meeting last week, we were directed, there was some interest, we didn't poll everyone to see if there was majority support, which is why the original proposed ordinance was not changed. But we had two items that were prepared, if in fact, there's, you know, an amendment made on the floor. And that is for benevolent associations like a VFW that has video gaming. There was discussion, and we're prepared for reducing that video gaming terminal annual fee to $250 per video gaming terminal. And then secondly, on the truck stops, capping at five video gaming terminals versus the 10 video gaming terminals for all those that meet the different provisions, the sale of 50,000 gallons of gasoline and other items. So we have five as outlined by the gaming statute, but we only have two currently that meet that provision. And I've got a minute and a half left, and I am done. I'm going to turn it back over to you, Mayor, and the council for open discussion and questions.
So just to clarify, there are a couple of possible So just to clarify, there are a couple of possible moving parts if the council so decides, okay?
Correct.
And Alderman Black?
Thank you, and I guess this would be for Jeff. From a procedural standpoint, I saw the draft amendments that are there, and I think we'll probably want to vote on those one by one. How would that work in terms of the overall vote? Do we vote on those individually as amendments, and then whatever would change, then we have a final full vote on the proposal with the changes?
Or should we have it first?
Or should we have it first? Yeah.
Similar to how you approached the zoning ordinance, the recommendation would be to get the actual ordinance on the table, and then there would be a motion to amend. So there'd be a motion and a second to approve the ordinance, and then there'd be a motion to amend it, and that would be...
One by one, I guess.
Okay. So can we start with a, again, this is just a discussion, but a motion to approve the video gaming ordinance and a second? Do we have that?
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve the core amendment as presented.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by, oh, excuse me, Councilmember Crable. Okay, and now Alderman Black, you did not turn your light off, so I'm assuming you want to go back to the amendments, so.
Yes. I would like to make a motion that we adopt draft amendment number one, which is the proposed license fee amendment, lowering the fee to 250 for fraternal organizations and nonprofits.
So I second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and then, again, this is an amendment to the main motion. If this were to pass, it would become part of the main motion. If it were to fail, we return back to the regular motion. Everybody, okay with that? Councilmember Carrillo, can you hear us?
I can't.
Okay. Any questions at this point?
No.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Bray?
So doesn't the original, the originator of the original motion have to agree with this amendment for it to be part of his motion?
No, it's only, if there's only an amendment, a friendly amendment, like if somebody were to say, hey, I want to change the slight wording of it, then we'd have to go and have the, because we're not voting on his motion yet.
Right, but...
Okay, Jeff, you see, any...
I think that he has to say, yes, that's a friendly amendment, I agree with that, or something, you know, I don't think...
He can disagree, and the motion could still pass, though. The amendment could, Mr. Jurgens, is that correct?
Yeah, so since this isn't necessarily a friendly amendment, it has to be, the formal process would have to be followed. So even if the original maker of the motion doesn't agree, if it passes by majority, then this, then the motion, the original motion will be amended to reflect this change. Does that make sense?
Thank you for that.
Any other logistical questions? If we can go ahead and vote then on the amended motion, and that would be to lower the fee for nonprofits. Alderman, excuse me, Councilmember Crable, excuse me, Councilmember, Councilmember Carrillo, how do you vote on this?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. And are there any other amendments?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept amendment number two, to limit the large truck stops to the five video gaming terminals.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second to that motion that would be an amendment to the main motion?
Second.
Who did the, I'm sorry, oh, you did. Secondary in chief, okay. Councilman, excuse me, yeah, Councilmember Millowamway, okay? Any further discussion on that? Any discussion on the merits of that? Again, we had some concerns by local businesspeople and others, but Councilmember Bowlin?
Yeah, I do want to talk about the people that came up. It is true that with the truck stops, so we only have two that qualify, that money is coming in from outside. So I agree with him there. But I also very strongly support equitable treatment, which goes to the five. So I'm conflicted, because I see that the money is coming in from outside, which economically is good, but that it's not equitable.
Okay, thank you.
My comment.
Councilmember Matthews?
So one of my thoughts on this is, I think a lot of it goes to the equitable treatment that you were talking about, but there's also, once you put a hole in the dam, you can't plug it back up, right? So this is something that if we actually determine that, you know, we've heard from a couple people that 10 of the truck stops are going to hurt the local businesses, we've heard from a couple people that 10 of the truck stops is going to drive truck drivers to different truck stops in the area, right? So we've heard both sides of the argument, and right now, I haven't seen anywhere where we've gotten any proof or any sort of numbers either way. But if we vote this in right now, and we're wrong, we can always go back and change it later, right? We can, we could say, you know what, the numbers went down, we want to change how we do this, and we can fix this later, but if we allow it now, we, I don't think that there's really a good mechanism where we can roll this back and say, no, 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 we allowed you to spend a whole bunch of money to make changes to your facility, to allow for 10 of the extra machines at your facility, take all that out now. I'm sorry you spent that money, but so sorry, right? So that's kind of where I'm at on that.
Councilmember Black?
Thank you. Yeah, we've talked about this topic, you know, a lot, and I want to thank Tim and staff for putting together this compromise and the ordinance as presented with the amendments. You know, I'm not sure anything I'm going to say today can convince anybody, but I have gotten a lot of feedback from folks that have said, we don't necessarily care about the truck stops, and I want to reflect that I'm not going to be supportive of this motion. I'm not, I might be on my own little island on this, and that's okay. But I do think there's some value, and there are different businesses, we're already categorizing them differently because they're getting a higher fee. But again, I know that this was a difficult process, and that it was forged out of compromise, which I'm very supportive of, so I'll be voting no on this amendment.
May I jump in?
Yeah, absolutely.
Before we get on sex?
Yeah, and then we have Councilmember Bray who will follow you, but go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm in agreement with Councilmember Black, that I think we have heard different sides of the argument, but in my sense, the truck stops, and based on the feedback that I've gotten, aren't in direct competition with some of the establishments that people visit for a lot of other reasons besides the video gaming. That may be one feature that attracts people to the business, but it's ultimately the environment of the business that keeps them coming there. So, you know, I personally am not too concerned that people are going to instead visit a truck stop, and I do think that that revenue can be used for projects that benefit the community as a whole, so I'll be voting no on the amendment.
Okay. Councilmember Bray?
So I'd like to echo Councilmember Matthews' comments, because I think he said it very well when he said, we can test this, and if we find that there is some negative economic outcomes for our truck stops as compared to truck stops in neighboring communities, that we can increase this at some time in the future, because we see that there is a negative impact. However, if we take the other model and we increase now, it'll be very difficult to unring the bell, to pull it back and reduce the number of these VGTs at any location. As we know, we've had a lot of discussion about that, and that's been an issue as we've taken on this topic of taking away something from the business model that, you know, that our valuable businesses put together, and we're trying to respect that. So I like this idea of staying with five, and then let's monitor and see what happens. And finally, I'll say again, thank you, Tim, and thank you, Jeff, and Billy, and staff for the process that you initiated to bring about this, frankly, as a compromise. I don't think everybody got everything they wanted in this, but I thought the process worked very well, and I'd like us to replicate this process for some other topics that are going to be coming up as well. I think this worked out well for us, so I will be supporting Alderman Matthews' approach here.
Okay. And I just wanted to echo what Councilmember Bray said to the staff. Thank you all for working through a very difficult topic that we've been discussing for a long time, that there were lots of different opinions on, and this is a compromise, as I believe I had maybe said, I think it was to Maria from the Panograph, there's something here for everybody to like and not like. And that's unfortunately the way that things work, you know, in a compromise. I also want to say, as I have said before, even though I have, I tend to side with Mr. Hubbard and others who have said that we should let the market determine this, this is a compromise. It's a compromise I think that I can live with. I don't particularly, I don't support this particular amendment, but I would not, or item veto it, even if it passed five to four. This is a compromise. And so I think we're all at the table saying, we're not going to get what we want, but we're trying to, you did a masterful job in trying to find something that everybody at least could live with, even if we don't like it, if that makes sense. So, yes. Councilmember Emig?
Yes, I agree that the document reflects Yeoman's effort to compromise here. I have decided, it was challenging for me, as Councilmember Bowlin indicated, to make this decision, because via input last week, we knew that we were adding this amendment in the spirit of equity. But what I finally came back to was realizing that the state had already made some determination that truck stops were different from local establishments, or they wouldn't have allowed a different maximum amount of gambling, gambling, video gaming, sorry, to take place. So I'm not sure that the equity issue is applied, given that there's already such a distinction, and Councilmember Black also pointed out that we are asking truck stops to pay more per terminal. So there's some recognition that this is a different beast. But I do appreciate all of the effort and respect that we might have a different view.
And just, I may have misspoken, I was, regardless of what I said, I was on the side of Alderman Black, you know, in terms of the amendment. Did I say that, or did I say the reverse?
You said that.
I did say that, okay. I was thinking, did I say the reverse? Anyway, I wouldn't, yeah, whatever happens, happens. Doesn't matter, regardless of my personal preferences on this. Councilmember Bowlin?
We, I agree, we've been talking about this forever, and we have all compromised on a lot of things, but I want to give Johnny a pat on the back, because she wanted to keep the moratorium indefinitely, and we've come a long way from that, so thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, at this point, if we'll go ahead and vote, Councilmember Carrillo, how do you vote on the amendment? This is, again, this is just the amendment. Scott Black's amendment.
Wait, no, Jamie Matthews' amendment, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry.
So this is the amendment to reduce it from 10 to 5?
I apologize. Thank you.
Yes.
Jamie, would you restate your...
This is the amendment number two that we were given, which would reduce large truck stops, or it would keep them at five, the same with everybody else, and not allow them to expand to 10.
So if we're voting, if people are voting for your amendment, they are voting to have five at the truck stops as opposed to 10?
Yeah.
Okay. Alderman Carrillo?
Nay.
The motion carries five to four. There are four nays to announce, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Emig, Councilmember Carrillo, Councilmember Black, Councilmember Crable.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. At this point, now we move to the main motion, which has two changes and two amendments, one that would reduce the fees for nonprofits, and one that would lower the number of video gaming terminals at truck stops to five, not 10. And so that is the main motion as it is amended. Both amendments passed. Councilmember Crable?
What happens to the applications that are, have been submitted during the moratorium? And logistically, based on my review of the ordinance, so there's two of us coming in, you know, to try to get a license, and so who determines who's their first or second? By the second or the minute, it gets stamped. How is that process going to work?
This is one that we knew was potentially an issue. We placed a date, but I'm going to let Jeff comment to that.
Yeah, so the second ordinance will actually set the date for accepting applications at September 15th, so that'll give staff time to get the new application forms created, get the process and everything in place. In terms of what do you, what happens if you've got, you know, multiple people that are there ready to file, the documents call for it to be on a first-come, first-served basis. So it's going to be whoever is in line when the clerk's office opens at eight, and it might be one of those situations where, similar to where you file your nominating petitions with the state board of elections, you know, we create a line and, you know, we, you know, number that. But it's going to be a first-come, first-served basis. The applications all have to be timestamped, date-stamped, everything like that.
And just to clarify, if somebody already has an application, they're going to have to refile, reapply?
That's correct, yes. Yeah, there'll be a complete new process with new forms, new requirements, it's completely restricted.
And this could start at 8 o'clock tomorrow morning?
No, September 15th would be the, yes, yeah.
I just wanted to scare...
Actually, I think it's the 16th. I think the 16th is...
The other thing I was just going to clarify, we have not been accepting applications, so even if somebody calls and wants an application, they don't get it, so there are no filed applications on file with us right now.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions, clarifications before we vote? Okay, this is the, the actual vote on the motion as amended with two amendments, okay? Councilmember Crable, why do I keep doing that? Councilmember Carrillo?
This is for the voter, this is for...
This is the vote, or, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I did. I just wanted to say that I really do appreciate the time and energy that staff have put into reaching this compromise. Unfortunately, I do not see enough of the, enough of the things that were important to me in this proposal for me to be able to be supportive of it, so my vote is nay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Will everyone else make sure that they voted? Okay. The motion carries eight to one. There's one nay to announce, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Carrillo.
Okay. Thank you very much. We move right along to the city manager's report, and I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Gleason. Mr. Gleason?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Scott Rathman, it's that time of the month, finance director's report. Let's go, Scott. We're burning daylight.
Wear my sneakers next time. First of all, a quick comment about closing up FY '19. No exhibits for this evening, but we're still trending right in that mid $2 million surplus range, a little under two and a half, 2.3 to 2.4. So no major changes now from audit, but the audit's still ongoing, so we'll be finalizing that in the next 45 days, but we're still looking at a very positive finalization for the year. This exhibit's going to be very similar to last month, because last month I did a snapshot during the middle of July. This one is as of the end of July. What you may notice right away, and this is going to be a bad reference to any Spinal Tap fans, but when Tim and I first met, he asked me to come up with the, you know, the top 10, and basically, we just did those on the annual budget size, but now we've gone to 11 here. Scott, all right on, man. We've added a replacement tax. The budget for the year is 1.6 million. It's even with hotel motel, and it's trending very well, so I asked him if I could add that to the exhibit, and he said yes, so that's going to be represented here going forward. Replacement tax, I've mentioned this before, that was, you know, I think back in the 70s when a personal property tax was, that right was removed from municipalities, so the state started imposing a tax on LLCs and corporations, and they passed that through to municipalities. So it's a form of income tax. The payment, the timing is a little different than our income tax payments from the state, which we get 12, we get one every month. Replacement tax, we just get eight. So that big blip we saw at the end of 2019 in income tax, that's getting reflected in the first month of the 2020. So you can see, year-to-date, we're $275,000 over budget in replacement tax, and compared to last year, it's 152 over. So I kind of wanted to zero in on that. It's a new line item for tonight and going forward. It's doing very well. As I mentioned last month, every category right now for the budget, except for the two in the middle there, income tax and utility tax, are trending above budget for the year. Prior year, utility tax is under. I mentioned that that's... I mentioned that that's solely due to telecom. Well, electric was down a little bit, but we've made, we're going to be making that up due to the hot July. That just hasn't hit yet, so I'm anticipating making up a little bit of ground next month. Hotel motel, we're a little under last year, but we, we took that budget down, and so year-to-date, we're doing fine right there. Jumping back up to income tax, just a little preview on next month. We made up that $56,000 underage this month. We had a very good August in income tax. We are going to be, when I report for August, will be $33,000 ahead year-to-date compared to budget for income tax. So, you know, good news, the local economy reflected in the, in the food and beverage. I think, you know, things are looking very thumbs up, you know, for the city. So it, it makes this, this report a lot easier when that's happening. It's, it's a little early to, you know, kind of depict any trends with the general fund statement. I mean, there's a lot of seasonality in the general fund with parks and rec in the summer. Going, kind of going back to some of my original comments when we first started doing this report, we show that annualized trend of 25%. That's really just the percentage of the year that's been realized to date through July, so May, June, July, that's, you know, three months out of the year. So that'd be 25%. If everything was just straight-lined, you'd look across that, and we could say percent of the budget used would be 25% right down the column. Well, it just doesn't work that way, but it kind of gives you some bearing, you know, gives us something to discuss in comparison. What I will say is, you know, salaries, we put in that large vacancy savings this year, kind of, we were, we're acknowledging history, $1.2 million in vacancy savings was put into the budget. And you can see that we're, we're still slightly, you know, coming in slightly under on salaries. Benefits were slightly over. Some of that has to do with work comp, when that gets paid out to individuals, even though it's a form of salary, it gets reflected in benefits. And then plus, the sick leave payouts for retirements, that gets reported in the benefits as well. And we, as you know, we've had some people retiring recently. So, you know, we'll, we'll be keeping our eye on that benefits column. At this stage, you know, I wanted to, to take the opportunity and kind of highlight some of the things that have changed year-over-year. So the transfer in, that is representative of charges to the enterprise funds primarily by the general fund, or finance, legal, HR. One of the big things we did going into 2020 is we finalized the, the, I don't know, conversion, but the tran, the transfer of the billing department that was part of water. So cashiers came over the prior year, and then the billing department that, that processes all the utility bills, that became part of finances, which is in the general fund. But then we charged that back out to the enterprise funds. So it really, it grossed up that revenue category. So you can see prior year-to-date actual in the far-right column, last line under revenue was 460,000. This year it's $684,000 year-to-date. So that's reflective of the additional charges that we're pushing out to the enterprise funds, not additional expense overall for the city, but it's just, it's, it's the way that the numbers are flowing now. We've got in the general fund, so the, the salaries and benefits, you know, that's where that department's being reflected. Commodities and contractuals, you know, for the, the amount of money we spend on sending out the bills, et cetera. But then we're charging it back out via the transfers in. As another kind of sidebar, next month, I wanted to talk to Tim. I'll send out a, just a description, or a little cheat sheet on what these, these lines, what are included in those lines. Like, it's, it's not real clear, transfer out, other expenditures, other intergovernmental, you know, what is included in those line items? So I'll send you out a cheat sheet, and you can kind of get a little bit more understanding as what's captured. Like, other intergovernmental, you know, that's a huge line item. Most of that is due to public safety pensions, you know, we're sending out, and McLean County. Enterprise funds, just going to talk about revenue. This is typically what I do for the enterprise funds. The trend, 25%. You can see we're a little under in water, sewer and storm, oh, excuse me, water and sewer. You know, that's consumption base for water. Wet spring, I don't know if that, you know, that may have driven some of those lower consumptions in water. Solid waste trending perfectly at 25%. Golf, it should be higher in the summer months, so it's, it's a hedge of the straight-line trend of 35%. The arena, you know, the venue side with venue works, it's a slow time for them. You know, the summer, all the outdoor venues are kind of taking that business. They're really getting ready to ramp up. So that, that 11%, they're actually doing better than planned as of right now, so no concerns there at all. Golf, you know, I, I put that year-over-year reference there. You can see FY '19, we were at a million in revenue through July, we're at 881. So we're keeping an eye on golf. You know, the trends are kind of decreasing as far as the activity there goes. And that concludes the Director's Report for this evening. Any questions?
Questions to Mr. Rathman? Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Donna?
You know, I'm always-- Yeah, the, the enterprise funds?
Yes.
I always freak out when I see red. Can you explain that?
Well, I don't have the asterisks in there yet.
Okay.
For, like, when we were doing FY '19, there's, there's, a lot of these funds have budgeted use of fund balance.
Okay.
So when you see a total year-to-date gain or loss, I mean, like with water, with, with the capital improvement projects that we have planned, you know, it's budgeted to lose money for the year. So the commitments and POs, you know, those are the encumbrances, so they haven't, it hit, we haven't actually paid for those projects or those commitments yet, but it's, it's an expense, so that's in red. So water, year-to-date including encumbrances, is at a $1.8 million loss, but it's not, it's not a surprise, you know. So the, the negatives on the enterprise funds, I don't want to say they're meaningless, but especially when we're budgeting capital projects and we have a budgeted use of fund balance, I'll get those references in for next month so that we'll get a little bit more clarity on if we see a negative in the total year-to-gain, gain-loss, it's okay because we budgeted that.
The questions are mainly for the people out in the world--
Fair enough.
Because all the taxes went up and fees went up, and if it looks all red, then it's like, where's that money going? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Jamie, thank you very much. Mr. Gleason?
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, there we go. We have the upcoming events are on the screens around us. And then real quick, going back to the Finance Director's Report, this is something that we started a year ago. Again, quite a, quite a bit of community input when I'm out and about that say that they appreciate the snapshot. So, you know, that, that, that's something as a direct result of, of you guys saying that you wanted, I think we lost Jen.
We, we lost her a little while ago. She texted me.
Got it. And it, it's just something that I actually receive, a fair amount of comments, very supportive, very appreciative of this. This was something going back a year ago, the council made it very clear, you wanted, you know, a little deeper look into the city's finances, and we're actually, you're into this now. So, real quick, those are the events that are upcoming. And then regarding the agenda item involving me, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. A few things, I just wanted to read the text Alderman Carrillo had to get off, said, "I'm so sorry if I have to head back into work. Please thank the rest of the council for allowing me to participate in the meeting remotely." So that was at 7:06. In terms of a couple of other things, I certainly had a, a great last weekend, not this past weekend, the weekend before, in downtown with the Music Fest. I went there, I was there at 1:00, then I had to go to something else. I came back at around 5:00, and then I came back at around 8:00, and it was really hopping downtown. So that was wonderful. It used to be called the Jazz Fest, but this is the third time that we've had that. Also, just to remind everybody, if you want to march in the Labor Day Parade, we can give candy out, can't throw candy, but we do, this is the, this is the candy parade. So just FYI. The other thing, in a bit of reversal, I did talk to the City Manager at length, and I am, in fact, you already have the emails to this. I am going to submit to the council appointments, to the boards and commissions, several that, that will essentially allow the Technology Committee to be formed, Transportation Committee to operate, and then there were a couple of other minor additions there. So you should have that in your box 14 days in advance. So, at this point, other questions, comments? Alderman Black, and then Councilmember Bray?
Yeah, thank you. So Alderman Sage would do this in the past, and I figure that, that I'll just jump on board and do it now. Don't presume to be just like him, but I, I like the practice. So we did your, your performance evaluation this evening. We didn't talk about it during the consent agenda, and I'm certainly not presuming to speak for council, so I'll just speak for myself and just say, "Thank you for your hard work over the last year." As someone who was initially very skeptical about hiring from the outside, we've really done, we've done a, that was a very smart move on our part, but it's also a testament to your leadership and performance. You know, you look at the trends nationwide, fewer and fewer people are wanting to be involved in public service, fewer and fewer people wanting to be involved at the City Manager level. It's a very, very difficult job. It takes a lot of time, takes a lot of energy, it takes a lot of passion, and not everybody can do it. And even fewer people who can do it do it very well. You're performing at a very, very high level from where I sit. And anyone who's interacted with you either at a council level, at a community stakeholder level, or at the citizen level, all the feedback I've got has been very positive. And, and, you know, it, the number gets thrown around every year, talk about how the governor of Illinois, you know, makes less money than the City Manager. I don't think the governor of Illinois does even a quarter of the work that you do. So, thank you for, for your excellent performance, and I think it should be publicly acknowledged that, you know, from where I sit, you're doing a fantastic job, and look forward to seeing what comes out in the future here. So thanks, Tim.
Thanks for bringing up that spurious correlation. Yeah, we pay more to the President of Illinois West than the President of the United States gets, but just because they're fundamentally different. Councilmember Bray?
Thank you, Mayor. And I would like to echo Alderman Black's comments, and I, I had some notes here just to, to visit a little bit about, about this performance review that was completed, and simply let everyone know that the council spent a great deal of time and the mayor talking through what was the performance of our City Manager. And we developed a process to go through that and walk through that very intentionally, and came to consensus on this rating and on, on the salary bump, as well as the additional benefit for time off, because it was well-deserved. And we're just really excited about what year two brings, and I would be remiss without thanking all my peers here that we rolled up our sleeves and, and we did some good work here in hiring this guy. And then now with the, with the review, and I, I'm hopeful that, that we'll continue to have that synergy as we move forward into some really exciting work. And I want to thank Jeff Jurgens for helping us walk through that process, as well as Scott took, took a lead, Alderman Black took a lead in helping us kind of correlate our consensus and move us through the stages of consensus and, and final delivery. So thanks to all, and especially thanks to our, our awesome City Manager, Tim Gleason.
Thanks. Maybe we can give him another round of applause. Councilmember Matthews, and then Mila Wambwe.
So Kim and Scott stole almost everything I was going to say. The one thing I was going to add, I'll add to that, is that when we were looking at setting year-two goals, there was a significant amount of synergy amongst the council of what we all thought were the priorities were for the city. And, you know, I, I think that we were all on board of what you did really well. And, and I, I just thought it was an interesting take, too, to see how much our goals for the future all lined up. So I, I thought that was a great part that was revealed during this process as well. So, like they said, thank you, Tim. The other thing I just wanted to touch base on really briefly is that ticket sales for the new season for the Center for Performing Arts opened up last week. And if you haven't looked yet, I think there's 22 shows or something like that that are coming up, and some of them look really amazing. And so I just think it's worth everybody's time to look to see, we have some incredible talent that's going to be available like six blocks from here, that you can't buy tickets to some of these things because they sell out in Chicago, they sell out in New York, and we have the opportunity to, to, to visit them locally. You know, one of the ones I'm super excited about is Black Violinist coming back again this year for the third visit, and those guys are simply amazing. So it's worth looking on the, the BCPA's calendar to check out because I think they successfully went out and found something for everybody this time through. I'm not a big person for dance performance, but my friends are, are ecstatic about that, so I'll just take their word on that part of it. And that's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Matthews stole the additional thing I was going to say about the goals. But I, I have to say that it was very exciting to see how much synergy there is amongst ourselves, but also with the City Manager. So I'm very, very excited about the goals that you have set for, for yourself and, and for the city. And, you know, when we set out to, to make the decision to hire you, I, I thought at the time that this was the, probably the most important decision that I would be making as a council member. And, and boy, was I right, you know, because I, I think your, your performance has been excellent, and we are, we really are looking forward to what, you know, the future brings for, for the city. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being a uniting force, too. But, okay, anything else? At this point, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Councilmember Black. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Painter and somebody else. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.